President.
Jason Musley is absent. Doug Kaufman?
Here.
Patty Egan?
Here.
Buzz Harris is absent. Dagny Stapleton?
Here.
Kevin Weiskie?
Here.
You do have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Robert. Next item on the agenda is item three, public comment. This item is for either general public comment or for a public comment on an action item. If commenting on an action item, please place the agenda item number on their request to speak for them. Do we have any public comment other than what's on the agenda at this time? Seeing none, I'll close. Public comment will move to approval in minutes of the May 16th workshop. So moved. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Commissioner Kaufman, second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Weiskie, a second by Commissioner Kaufman. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show, the motion carries five zero. Item five on the agenda is discussion and possible direction to staff regarding mixed-use based zoning and overlay district standards. This is for possible action. It looks like we have the same players that we've had throughout this process in the audience, so I want to keep this as informal as possible. This is for information. We want to hear your input, but I would like a little brief where we came from, where we're at right now, and what we're going to discuss today. Claudia, if you would.
Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. Earlier last week, I sent out some suggested wording. I don't even know if I want to call it a draft ordinance. I'm not sure we're that far along yet, but reflecting some of the comments that you had at the last meeting. And then Mr. Crater sent, I believe, to everybody some comments and suggestions that he had on the same ordinance. So I think you all have that before you. Tonight with me is Amy Cummings from RTC who had requested additional information on trip counts and ridership on the bus lines and their view of Todd Corridors. She is available tonight for that presentation if you so wish to hear that presentation. I can go through the ordinance. You all have it before you. I think you've probably already looked through that. I don't know if you want to hear comments first or if you want to hear RTC's presentation or what format you would like to use.
Well, what's the feeling of the commission? Would you like to hear from RTC on the bus and transportation issues before we get into details? That'd be the direction we'll take, so. Please identify yourself for the record.
Thank you. I'm Amy Cummings, Director of Planning at RTC, and I appreciate the invitation to come and talk to you about transit and transportation planning. I know I was here, I guess, a couple of months ago to talk about the regional transportation plan, so this builds on that effort and gives you a little bit more of an update on where we are with planning for the rapid. And I have some graphics that we might get up in a minute or we might not. But I do have some maps that talk about our transit ridership, and as you would expect, we have our highest ridership in our TODs. And especially Virginia Street, that's where we have the highest ridership of the system, followed closely behind by the Fourth Prater Corridor. And as we've been out in the community talking about what people's vision is for the rapid service over the next 20 years, those are the two corridors that people are identifying as their highest priority, but expanding from the service that we have now. So perhaps ultimately, if funding were available, to go on Virginia Street with the rapid, all the way from the TMCC Sierra Summit area up to UNR and TMCC in the north on the Dandini Campus is the Virginia Street Corridor, and on Fourth Prater to go from downtown, the transit station that we have on Fourth Street, all the way east to Legends. So from the RTC standpoint, transit supportive land uses in those corridors are crucial because the more walkable pedestrian-friendly area we have in those core transit corridors, the higher our ridership is going to be. And it's in particular, it's not even so much the entire length of the corridor because we do have some lower density areas in there, but it's right around the station areas. So if you can plan ahead on where your stations are going to be, it's that quarter mile, half mile walking distance around your station areas that's really the most critical from the transit ridership perspective. And just as an average, we have about, system-wide today, we have about 30 people per service hour. So that means for every hour of service that we have buses out there, we've got about 30 people on that bus. So that's just our average. Virginia Street is obviously much higher, and that's a quarter, too. Where almost a quarter of the trips that happen on Virginia Street where we have the rapid service are on the bus. So where you do have that higher level of transit amenity and the more dense land uses, you can really reduce your mode share of auto use. So did you have any specific questions on the transit side?
I believe, Commissioner Kaufman, you asked about the ridership issues at the last workshop. Am I wrong in that? Something about the numbers on the different Todd?
No, I think that kind of answers. 30. What does RTC look for as far as expanding their service or, you know, what?
Well, that's a good question, and as we've been out in the community for the regional transportation plan process, we have only gotten a couple of requests for intersection improvements or roadway widenings. The vast majority have been for transit improvements. In particular, out to some of the outlying suburban communities, which are more difficult to serve with transit because they are very low density, like Spanish Springs, Golden Valley, Lemon Valley, Galena, Damonte Ranch, those outlying peripheral communities, where people do feel a little bit isolated and they don't have the same number of transportation options that people have in the urban core. It's obviously very expensive to serve those areas because they're farther out. It's a longer trip and you probably have fewer riders per service hour. But we're going to look at some new solutions, maybe some even two or three day a week service options to target the senior community where people might just need to get to some basic medical shopping trips and link people into our fixed route that way. So we're developing those cost estimates and we can report back in the future.
We had a project before us, and they had a bus stop, I guess, for lack of a better term, but yet it wasn't serviced. So, and that was out in Lemon Valley. So, you know, are there a lot of those out there or especially in the outlying areas or?
The number of bus stops that don't have bus service?
Exactly.
I'll have to do some research and I can certainly bring that back at a future meeting. I know that when we had the economic downturn begins a few years ago, we did have to cut service. So there were even some routes in the urban core that had pretty good ridership, but we can only provide as much transit service as our local sales tax will allow us to fund. So when sales tax went down, we had to scale back our ridership, our number of service hours. So there's certainly a lot of areas where we would like to expand. I know the Galleria up on Pyramid is one where we get requests all the time to expand service out there, and that would probably be one of our top priorities when we do expand service.
But what do you look, you know, you said that the average is 30. I mean, to have service per hour, you know, what does RTC look for? Is it, you know, 10 people per hour? Is it 15 people per hour?
Well, 30 is pretty good, and when you compare us to systems across the country, that's pretty strong. And I know they're trying to get my maps, but we do have a map that shows the ridership by route. And another route that does have very high ridership is the one that goes up to Sun Valley. So things that contribute to high ridership are high densities of houses, high employment densities, and also transit dependent populations, places where you might have lower income residents that perhaps don't have a car and transit is their only means of getting around. So our ridership tracks pretty closely with population employment density.
Okay, but still, you know, is there a certain ridership per hour that you look for before you would add that bus service?
I would say there's not a magic number. I can bring back a chart that shows you the ridership for each route by service hour so you can see where it falls, because for a longer route, like our Carson City Route, those buses are full. There's, you know, we had to add an extra bus because there's no, there were no more seats available. But the average is low because it goes over a longer distance, if that makes sense. So the shorter trips maybe have a higher average and the longer trips have a lower average. So I'm afraid I don't have probably the answer you're looking for, but I can bring back more statistics for the next meeting.
Commissioner Kaufman, if you don't mind this. Commissioner Weiskie. I think what Doug's looking for is you just said, you know, okay, well, we took out some routes. Well, something dictated taking out those routes.
Right.
It's not just sales tax, it's ridership. It's either ridership by hour or by day or by month or whatever it is because at some point, a route is not feasible. And what is that magic number?
When those service cuts were made, and I wasn't at RTC at the time, and I don't know the exact cutoff numbers, but I know it was looking at them relative to each other. So it was the, and I know this is probably not giving you the answer you need, and I'll have to come back again with that data, but it's just looking at them compared, you know, relative to each other. So Virginia Street has the highest, and I don't know the service, the ridership per service hour on that particular route. But I can bring that back at a future meeting.
Yeah, see, that's a thing that's kind of important to us because we have people who come for different projects and so forth and, you know, they ask those questions. That's why I'm asking you.
Okay, and it doesn't appear that we have that information right now, so we can hope that you come back and bring that to us. And to answer Kevin's question, why were the routes cut that were cut when they were reduced back? We'd like some input or information on that.
Okay, I can certainly.
Yeah, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't expect an answer. I was just trying to give you another question to prepare for when you do come back before us that I think it's all, that's, at least in my mind, I know with Commissioner Kaufman, we're just on the same page right now of trying to understand how RTC looks at which lines are productive, which ones get cut, because it makes a difference in where we want to propose borders and for city council to look at.
Right.
And so that's something of interest to us.
We did look at the percentage of our ridership that's in the existing TODs, and it's about 64% of all of our boardings occur in the TOD boundaries as they are today, so it's the majority. But I can bring that back by route and some of the other history next time.
Okay, so the other thing that would be beneficial to us is if we knew in those TODs, you know, which one has the highest and like, obviously, the closer you get to downtown, the higher the ridership. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, you know, maybe from our meeting or from Claudia, where we've been looking at maybe taking these TODs back? You know, that would be interested to know where that is. So, you know, so in other words, if one has 20 and the other one, the other half of that TOD has 60, you know, that's beneficial to us.
We do, we're having some technical difficulties. We do have a map of the ridership by stop overlaid on the TODs and the ridership by route, sort of color-coded, so you can see where those highest areas are. I should have brought a printed backup, but I did not, so I apologize.
Maybe if we can't get this fixed, maybe Claudia, you could have that emailed to us so we could take a look. Any, Dagny?
Yeah, Commissioner Stapleton. I remember this conversation at the last workshop, and I think we were looking for exactly that for each Todd Corridor ridership. I mean, the idea is, is that part of the reason that we're, you know, have these land use regulations in these areas is we're basing it on public transit and the potential for, you know, future transit. It's sort of like a chicken and egg thing, right? You know, if it's really dense and people don't have cars, they need buses, or maybe if we, you know, on the other hand, if we encourage, you know, higher density, then maybe, or wait, if there's more transit, then maybe people will, you know, you know, walk more and take ridership less, or you know what I'm trying to say? But I think that, yeah, if we could see a map for, which maybe we can't, so it's okay, but not only for current ridership, but also projected ridership for each of the TOD areas because I think that's a determining factor in how we think about TODs, right? Aren't we sort of also projecting out into the future as we're looking at these land use changes? And sort of, I think the long view is really important, so I know that was something that we talked about a little bit last time. From RTC's perspective, what's the projected ridership say out 20 years? Or maybe, I don't know if that's something you guys do or?
That's something that we're working on right now because we have just gotten the TMRPA Population Employment Forecast going out to 2035, and we're updating our travel demand model. Our current model doesn't really have very good capabilities for that type of multimodal analysis. But the one that we are completing and should be done in the next month will be able to give us a more robust analysis of transit ridership in the future. And it's also thanks to the new data that we have from TMRPA, we're going to be able to look at how population employment density correlates to existing ridership and use that to project into the future as well as another alternative. So that's something that will probably be September or October before we have that data, but it's something we're working on right now.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for you. In the downtown TODs, as many of the businesses that are there have street front parking for them. And I know in several occasions, we have looked at that and it has been looked at prior to many of us sitting on this commission as part of their parking. Does RTC review that when you are redesigning street layouts, striping, that type of thing? So how do you do that? And how do we, how do we, how do those businesses know that they're not losing parking?
One recent example is the Fourth Street Prater Way Corridor study that we're just now completing. And one of the main things we heard at our community meetings was from local business owners who said their parking is very important to them, and it was important that that be maintained so that their business can continue. So that's something that we took into account in our design concept, and we made sure that anywhere where there's existing parking today would remain in the long-term development scenario for the corridor. On Virginia Street in Midtown, we are about to be starting a study and working with the city to do a parking analysis of the Midtown area because I know that's a big concern for that particular part of the TOD as well. So it is something that we look at and we try to maintain it where we can. And we work closely with the cities. At some level, it's a policy decision whether you want to use, in areas with limited space, whether you want to use that for auto travel, bicycle travel, wider sidewalks, and perhaps locate parking off-street so you can have a shared lot, perhaps a block away, where multiple businesses could share that parking lot. But you need to have a lot more detailed analysis before you can really make those decisions. It has to be very case-by-case specific.
Thank you. And I just, I'd like to ask if you have any historical documentation, historical figures on, 10 years ago, was the Virginia Street ridership the number one ridership? Five years ago, was it number one? Was the transit between Prater and Victorian, was that the number one before there was ever a TOD? And was the ridership, have the ratio stayed the same historically previous to TODs being created? And now, I mean, and I don't know what the answer to that is. I don't claim to know. But I would like to see something that would say 15 years ago, 10 years ago, five years ago, this is what it was, okay?
That's a great question, and I know just from the last probably five or six years, well, historically, Virginia Street has had the highest ridership because, again, the ridership follows the population employment density. But at the start of the recession, because about half of our trips are people getting to and from work, when unemployment started to rise system-wide, our transit ridership started to decline a little bit. But on Virginia Street, at the same time, we were starting this rapid service. So you had your nicer buses, nicer stops, faster service. So on Virginia Street, where we had that rapid service, ridership went up. So we've had the biggest increase, about 16% increase since we started that service in 2009 in that particular corridor where other areas region-wide fell off a little bit. So it's a combination of service hours, the more hours buses you put out there and the more opportunities you get people to get on the bus, the higher your ridership's going to be. And then also, are you following the employment and population density?
Yeah, I'd just like to compare what the projections are to what historically we've seen, so. I know what, I know we'll have hard facts on that. They're not projections, they're hard facts, so that's what I'd like to see. Are we making any progress on, Robert? None? Well, we can, we can, yeah, next workshop?
I'll bring a poster.
Is this the one that we got at Regional, by the way? It is, okay. Very good, very good presentation.
If there's projections too by then, then maybe we can have this presentation together with the projection.
With some numbers coming in, so. Good, good thought.
But I think your point about, you know, there are some areas that don't currently have transit service that are in the TOD, so certainly we would hope to serve those in the future, but it would, you know, from the transit ridership standpoint, that's perhaps less of a priority than the places where we have transit today and are hoping to expand the rapid in the future.
Thank you. Any further questions? We'll look forward to the presentation at the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Claudia, did you want to, no, you're busy. I want to keep this as informal as we can since we all know each other here. Do you want to give a brief overview beforehand? Are you ready for input from?
We're in the right area now.
Okay.
Once again, Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. So going through, I'm going to go through my version. Mr. Crater might want to address his comments that he has in there. So what I've done is start, does everybody have their copy? We have extra copies if anybody needs one. You need one? Okay, so what I've done is gone through, and on the first page, specified that the density and intensity requirements are only for the regional centers. As I explained at the previous workshop, we are only looking at TODs, not at regional centers through this amendment process. And number three, the bottom of page one, I specified the street sections that were discussed earlier on the primary ones for the building front, front building setback areas. And I'm just going to go through this since it's a long document. If you want me to stop and go into further detail on something, just let me know.
What's the will of the commission?
Would it be possible to sort of, because our, since our workshop was a long time ago last time, as some of these, as you're going through, to just remind us of where we were going with that and what it all accomplished, things like that? Right, that's what I was saying. If you need more detail, just stop me and I'll get more into it.
And if someone, Melissa, Ken, or, you know, if you have specifics on the section that we're going over, I'd like, I think we should discuss that as we're going through it instead of having to come back and start over again.
So on sidewalks, on page two, we've got the, we had some wording in there regarding front setbacks on one side of the street or both sides of the street, depending on the size of the project. It's already required in other sections of code that you put sidewalk in front of the project wherever you're building it. One side of the street or two sides of the street, you just build the sidewalk. So I took out that wording as it was unnecessary. Again, specified the sidewalks installed in sections of Virginia Street, south of Plum, Fourth Street and Mill Street being the primary streets. We were talking about the northern portion of South Virginia. TOD is too narrow to expect the 18-foot setback in that area, so we kept that south of the convention center, regional center, convention, regional center, sorry. Down at E specifies that if the 18 feet isn't, if you cannot obtain the 18 feet, then you would do five feet for trees or landscaping and five feet for sidewalk. Page three is some rewording. Associated overlay is silent and parking, the ratio requirements and any associated reductions, just unnecessary wording in that area. Next changes are, page six. New buildings on sites under two acres in size shall be oriented to the primary street frontage or to the side property line if direct pedestrian access is provided from a primary street frontage. So we've had a number of projects that have come in. A couple of them are Melissa's actually that were able to turn the project sideways, but not necessarily put it all the way back. So that's another option so that you don't have to have it, the direct frontage on the street, but you could do it, turn the building sideways to give another option for design there.
Claudia?
Yes?
That's not the same as turning the building backwards to the street so that the front is not seen parked. It's similar to the shopping center that was built a few years ago on South Virginia below Del Monte.
Yeah, that would be the back of the building.
That's the back of the building, correct, and that's not what you're asking for here. That's not what's.
Correct. This is, I'm thinking more.
This is just turning it sideways for?
Yeah, so I'm thinking more the Maverick property.
Okay, right, right.
Where that, the gas station, they were able to turn it sideways, but not, it just gives them another option rather than having it all the way at the front. It allows them to turn it sideways and they would be able to have the fueling station on the side.
Okay.
Especially if permitted in this area, but just to give you an idea of the layout on that.
Okay.
I have a question on that. So if it's in a TOD though, would that mean that there would be a parking lot on the side? Yes. Okay, and then for the side of the building that would then make this, make up the street frontage, is there any requirements to have anything on the side that's more sort of pedestrian-oriented? If you're going to be turning the building where the front is on the side? Well, direct pedestrian access needs to be provided from the public sidewalk to the building. Right, and how about on that side of the building? Do you know what I mean? Like any windows? What would be the back of the building? So the side of the building would end up on the street frontage, right? Correct. If you're turning it. So my question is, then that side of the building, which is fronting the street, are there any regulations in place which make it sort of more, so it's not just a wall to where there's like a window on the side? I don't know. No, that's a good point. Maybe there's already requirements like that in the TOD. Streetscape, you know, sort of so it doesn't just look like the side of a building and breaking up sort of if it's, if it really is like a pedestrian-oriented corridor. That's great. We'll make sure that gets in there.
Hang on, Claudia. Ken, you had a comment on that?
Yeah, I was just going to say that in my mind, the best example of this is that little shopping center on South Virginia Street just south of California Avenue. It's turned sideways because the parcel's so narrow and there really wasn't any way, other way to develop that. And to speak to Dagny's question, you still have to meet all the requirements as far as street frontage for landscaping, sidewalk width, room for tables, et cetera. So I think you still have that pedestrian orientation along with some of the requirements and architectural articulation that are in the code. So I think a lot of your stuff might be addressed by what's already in here.
And I think it is. I just, I need to make sure with the building being flipped like that, that it is.
Melissa? Oh, please identify yourself for Robert because he'll shoot me if you don't.
Melinda with Wood Rogers. I think that the side option is good to have a side option, but it still doesn't really address the issue that we've all seen that retailers want people to be able to see their front door and they want to be able to see that there's parking available on the front, so. So I think you're still going to have that overriding issue with retailers that want to attract business.
What would you say the solution would be? Maybe, I don't know, maybe that it's not, you're saying it's not viable to maybe, to maybe have that being?
Well, I think Ken had, in a couple areas where the issue is retailers want you to be able to see the front of the store and they do want you to see that there's parking available, and that's been an overriding theme in a number of projects. And I think Ken had some language about maybe limiting the parking in the front, but still allowing parking in the front, but limiting it, or, and I think there were some other options that perhaps you could put more landscaping in or maybe a combination of the pedestrian amenities, which I saw in one of, later on in Claudia's area, I can't remember where it is exactly, but if you don't meet these.
So the building would?
If you don't meet these requirements, you can do that.
So to set the building back with the parking in front, you'd have more amenities?
The standard way.
Which would be part of, I think, what, was it the last meeting, the menu type?
The menu type thing.
If you did this, you were allowed to do.
Which I do see that in the back, but, but you, you talk about building orientation here, so why not put it right in here that you can do? You can do it sideways, you can do it in the front without any extra requirements, but then if you want to have parking in the front, then you have, have to do more landscaping or the 1% more pedestrian amenities, or a combination thereof, which I didn't see a combination allowed.
And that's located on page, that's canceled.
Page, I guess there's no page number, yeah.
It's on?
14.
Page eight of.
14B.
Right, page eight of the draft ordinance. And the combination is, we can add that in. And we have that in that section, since that's the, the exceptions. So you would either do, your choices are the special use permit, the landscaping, or the pedestrian amenities, and those are your, that's under the exceptions to standards.
So can I, can I follow up on this, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So is the suggestion that maybe this isn't quite the solution that was, that, you know, to this problem, that the turning the building maybe isn't quite the solution we're looking for, that it was a little more flexibility on parking in the front? I don't know if that's correct, but I just, I mean, I think that's what my question was getting at, that, you know, shop owners, you know, merchants want to know that people can see their front door, and if it's turned to the sideways, they can't. And that example that Ken said, I mean, honestly, I've lived in that neighborhood for, you know, 10 years since that was built. And even I had a friend who had a shop in there, and I, I don't go in there, nobody I know goes in there. And I really think that for that corridor where there's no parking in front, and it's really pedestrian oriented, it just doesn't do it. So, that's my opinion on that. And that maybe the issue that we were trying to solve with that, you know, allowing that orientation to be changed to the side, maybe isn't quite solved by this change.
We just.
It's a responsibility, but it still might not, in every case, be desirable, because then you have a loading dock. And you want to have the loading docks in the back. In the side, you need loading docks. If you don't need loading docks, I think the side works.
Melissa, you need to.
Sorry. If you, if you don't need loading docks, maybe the side works in, in certain areas, and maybe it works in areas that you've seen, but.
So the idea again is to have the options there where you can turn the building to where it best suits the need, and if you add extra landscaping or amenities, that's the, the price or the offset for turning the building? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, and, and I think with the landscaping, Claudia did provide some options. The landscaping or an additional 1%, and I think maybe we should consider, and, or a combination thereof. Because maybe you can get, maybe you can't get an extra 10%, but you can get 8% and then you can supplement it with extra pedestrian amenities, or mix and match them.
You know, I have, I have a hard time with that, 'cause every time we set it at 10%, then the magic number is 8%. We set it at 8%, and gosh, we're only able to get 5%. You know, it, it's, it's such a floating number that I understand exactly what you're saying, but, you know, the projects that we see are the ones that miss by 2% or 3% or 5%. Nobody ever misses by 50 or 60%. So, you know.
Then if you have the option, if you have the opportunity to, to supplement it with additional pedestrian amenities, you make your, I, I think you make your minimum.
Well, that's why you've got, or an additional 1% of pedestrian amenities.
So it's either, you want either.
So it's either or.
One or the other, not, not any combinations of both.
Well, what would you propose for a combination?
Well, if you, if you had, this is in addition to your, your landscape minimum. So you've already met your landscape minimum of 15% or whatever it is. And then you want to do, you have room for, for an additional 5% more, but not 10%. And then you supplement the rest of that with the, the, the additional pedestrian amenities. So you don't have to either do one or other, you could do a combination. You could have more landscaping.
So once, once again, I ask, what's that magic number that you shoot for the first time? Because I guarantee you, somebody's gonna come in and miss it by 2 or 3%.
Well, if you have the option to, to mix and match, then you're still, you're still achieving.
To get to what percentage though? To, to get to what?
To get to the 10, the 10%.
Okay.
You either do, I guess you have three choices.
So you do 9% extra landscape and 1% pedestrian amenities, or 4% pedestrian amenities and 6% landscaping? To get to 10% total?
Staff can look into some options.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I agree with you, and I'm not, it's just, it's just such a random thing, that it, it just seems like, you know, I mean, that's what keeps us going in Planning Commission though, so I shouldn't complain, right? And I think, I think maybe part of this is so we don't have to hear variances for that 1 or 2% that is really a, in my opinion, a fairly insignificant number. I mean, but because of the way it's written now, it has to be met, so when you come in for a project, you have to come in for a variance or something from us. That's what I'd like to see go away. And give, give the developers an, an opportunity to do something else in this place. And maybe Claudia can come up with some things.
We'll look into that further, sure.
One more.
Should I move on?
I have, I have, I have a question on a different subject, but sort of a big picture question. At the last workshop, we talked about, I know, really limiting the TODs outside of the McCarran Loop. And then we talked specifically about how some of the TODs standards were more successful in, you know, the midtown area and maybe Fourth Street. And can you tell me how, are we doing that in here? Are some of these gonna be, did we just sort of do a blanket on all the TODs? Did we do different changes for different TOD corridors?
We'll get to that as we go through the document.
Okay, so the ones we're looking at now, are these in general for, these are gonna be general for all TODs?
Other than we're pulling back the southern portion of South Virginia, West Fourth outside of McCarran, and North Virginia, north of Hoag, I think we had it.
Okay.
As pulling those back.
So we're putting, pulling pretty much all those back, so that what we're looking at now is the changes to the ones that will remain?
Correct.
Which is?
The northern portion of South Virginia.
Northern portion of South Virginia.
West Fourth to McCarran.
East Fourth.
East Fourth, stayed intact. And then, North Virginia to Hoag.
Oh, and Mill Street, did that one, that one went away, right?
Oh, and Mill, we'll get to Mill, that's further on in the document.
Okay, I think, I personally feel, I personally feel that those areas, you know, are the ones that are a little more naturally suited to some of these TOD standards. The one that we were just talking about, the building orientation changing, I think that that's not something that really works, especially in midtown. I mean, and maybe on Fourth Street too. I think for this specific one, I think that, you know, the example Ken gave that I elaborated on is, is a good example of that, how that's a design that doesn't really work in a, in a more dense area. So that's my vote on that one. That maybe we try to solve what the issue was with the parking in a little bit different way than allowing a project to be oriented in, in those areas to the side.
And I've talked with, spoken with two developers in the midtown area and that, more than just midtown, that whole northern portion of South Virginia. And they actually like the standards, the way they are. I know that's not, that is, that's not a unanimous vote, but they, they are quite pleased with the way it is and have moved forward with the projects.
You mean, the way the TOD standards are before these changes we're talking about?
How it is currently adopted.
Right, right. And I think that some of the conversation we had was there's a couple places in town where the TOD standards as they currently are, are kind of working, so.
For some, for some developers.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Kinda.
Should we move on?
We have a, just a quick comment from Ken, or maybe not.
Yeah. Again, Ken Crater, I just wanted to say that if you have a parcel that works with the TOD, you know, that's great, you can probably fit within the TOD standards. But I think where we're going here is every parcel's got a different configuration. And the example that I brought up on South Virginia Street, South California Avenue, that was a terrible design, and most of that place has stayed vacant for a number of years because it's such lousy orientation to the street. So there's a lot of properties that would work just fine with the TOD standards. The problem is, is when you have a odd parcel configuration or a larger parcel size, and it doesn't work. So I think that's the reason that we're here today, to address these standards. And I, I did put a blurb in here, which Melissa spoke to, that would allow you to have no more than 50% of the street frontage with building frontage and the rest in landscaping, so you could bring parking to the street, but do something like require a six-foot landscape strip with a four-foot landscape screen height, maybe a combination of landscaping and fencing, so it still looks good, but starts to deal with that orientation issue, being able to see the building frontage, be able to see the cars parked in the lot, but still have a good design where you still have a, a good amount of building on the frontage. So I think there's some things that we can do like that, that'll solve that problem. And believe me, if I had a site where I could just, you know, work within the TOD standards, that's what you're gonna do. But I think where we're going is looking for that little bit of flexibility for those properties and parcels that don't work.
Well, just off, I've talked to you away from here, and I believe what we're talking about is a lot of infill projects on existing parcels that are already there and surrounded by other parcels. So you don't have a lot of options like you do in undeveloped land. So I think what we're ta, what we were talking about on this particular issue is to try to make a parcel that's an infill project work, as opposed to keeping it an empty parcel, undeveloped, so.
Okay. Should we move on? Okay. Down on number eight on page six, there's discussion of projecting signs. Projecting signs, there's a conflict with that, and on-premise signs, which you'll be seeing in the fall probably. Regarding projecting signs, there's a, there's a standard in the on-prem, on-prem sign ordinance that doesn't allow projecting signs, so you'll see that clarification come up with that sign ordinance. And also, just for the record, if it does project into the right-of-way, it does need to go through the license agreement process and be approved by city council. So that's, it's a different process, but just so that people are aware of that.
Claudia, would you mind saying the number of, we don't have page numbers on the copies we have, so if you could just say the number and the ordinance of where we're at?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Number eight, signs, under, let's go way back here. A, still under A. I'm sorry about that. The correction on page seven is just a typo. It should be, A7 should be building orientation, not pedestrian amenities. And Melissa's very aware of that correction that needs to be made. So that came up on her last project. Page eight, number 14, sorry, I won't use page numbers. Number 14, we just discussed being the 10% landscaping or 1% amenities being added in in lieu of the building orientation, and staff will look into that further to allow some sort of combination of those, see if we can come up with something. Yeah?
If I may, Melissa Lindell. The, the land use, you're saying that if you don't meet land use or building orientation, you can do these. And often cases, we don't, projects don't meet either one. So would that mean that you would have to do both of them?
Sure. We'll look into that to see which one, if that's, if it's, both of them are one, or if you do both, or it increases if you don't meet both of them, something like that.
Perfect.
Melissa, what were you looking for, a ratio of?
Well, I'm, I was looking for, if you say you don't meet the land use intensity, you can't meet the FAR, which is what we're always before you about. And then the building orientation, you want to put the building in the back with the parking in front if we don't resolve that. So you got two things you don't meet. So then, it says in lieu of special use permit, then you can do the landscaping or the pedestrian amenities. So I'm assuming that if you have two things that you're asking for, that you would have to do two things.
So you'd have to do both for both?
You'd have to do both, or, or maybe there's a third option.
And there, and there might be. I just, I put those in there kind of for discussion purposes. And also, for the South Virginia TOD, this is, we're talking about all of those TODs, TOD areas, the remaining TOD areas. When it comes to midtown, I think it's gonna be its own creature, and we're gonna get into that when we go through the midtown review. I could see maybe this not being an option in the midtown area. I think allowing additional landscape, additional pedestrian amenities, and putting a parking lot in front might not be appropriate in that area, but I would like to open that up to the property owners and business owners in the midtown area. They really know that area in detail, and I'd really like to get their input before we change it for that specific area.
I think we have to think about Fourth Street though, too, because I think Fourth Street has the potential to be, you know, just like midtown did in the last four or five years, to become a lot more, you know, pedestrian, you know, walkable area where there's more and more businesses opening up, and the way it's designed is a lot like midtown.
To East Fourth.
Yeah, East Fourth. So I think if, I think we need to be thinking about East Fourth sort of in 10 years possibly also.
Okay. Moving on. Oh, so on 15B, what that does is, you'll see in the Mill Street TOD, I've added in that anything east of the freeway. That boundary, I think, was discussed by Commissioner Wieske, that that area is just separate, and Angela Foose brought that also up. That that area you would be able to develop to IC standards. But if you develop IC standards, then you go completely IC standards. You can't do, okay, I want the IC use, but then I want the MU setbacks and the reduced parking in MU. It's one or the other, either do IC or you do MU. You can't pick and choose between the two. And that's how we have it in the airport regional center right now. Then we need to get through the regional center. And I have to, I'm sorry, I have to include all these area, all these sections, 'cause it's one large section. So when you prepare the ordinance, you have to include the entire section. I did, there is some inconsistent wording on the first line in the applicability section of all the regional centers that I fixed while we're in here for consistency. But I did not propose any changes to standards in those areas. As directed by council. So the next ones would be the South Virginia Transit Corridor section, which is section I. Everybody's there. Looking at the minimum setback area. We just have the 18-foot setback south of Plum, and that would be from property line. Mr. Crater also brought that up, that they should be from property line. In the midtown area, we could probably discuss that, whether it's property line or right-of-way line. Some instances that helps a project, and sometimes it hurts a project, whether it's from the, from curb or from property line.
I don't think we're quite with you yet.
Okay. Section I.
So are we in the table, the land use table?
No, we're on the South Virginia Transit Corridor. It's two-thirds of the way back, maybe?
In fact, if I can make a comment in that regard. Again, this is Ken Crater. It'd just be nice in terms of formatting, instead of like, all of a sudden you got this little I, South Virginia Street Transit Corridor after the regional centers, to kind of separate it from the introductory stuff, the first 14 items, then the regional centers, then the TODs. I just think it could be formatted a lot easier in terms of readability and be able to find out where you need to go, if that makes sense. It's just like, you know, you get into the TODs, which is like a major new thing within the zoning code, and it's only recognized by the start of this little I for the South Virginia Street Transit Corridor.
So you give I its own section number?
Yeah, start a new section, a big section for the TOD.
You want each TOD to have its own section?
That'd even be better, yeah.
That's, that would be an easier way to do it, is for each TOD.
That makes sense.
And for, we could do with, we're doing some formatting with the regional centers, just because they're all in the same section, that's not a problem.
And then as long as you brought up the setbacks, if I can address that. I spent a lot of time today looking at all the different transit quarters of South Virginia Street, Fourth, Mill, et cetera. And there's really no good way if you're using either the back face of curb or the right-of-way line, because everything jogs up and down the street, right-of-way as well as the face of curb. If you have a turn lane, the curb jogs. There are several properties where they acquired a bunch of additional right-of-ways, some, they need more right-of-way. So my thought was what we're. So my thought was what we really ought to do, and it wouldn't take that long, is to set all these major setbacks for things like South Virginia Street, Fourth Street, from the street center line. Because, for example, if we want Virginia Street through Midtown to be a four-lane section, then it'd be really easy to figure out a setback from that street center line. So we start to create consistency in where the sidewalk is, where the landscaping is. Same thing, south of Plum Lane, where you got the six-lane facility. And I started looking at it as an example, on South Virginia Street, from California Avenue to Mount Rose Holcomb, you have about an 80-foot right-of-way consistent. From Holcomb to Plum, it's about 90 feet, and south of Plum, it's about 101 feet. So I think it'd be a lot better and more consistent to establish that, that setback from street center line.
Mike, looks like you have a comment.
Just one clarification. I don't disagree with Ken, but how, maybe in this, you have the engineering backgrounds to tell me, I'm probably looking like an idiot when I ask this, but what, what do you do in those instances where you have a turn lane? If it's setback from the center line, and then somebody's setback, you know, if you got the turn lane in front of you, how does that affect their setback?
And that's the beauty of it, when you look at the TODDs, there's really no turn lanes, so to speak, since we're scaling these TODDs back. You're gonna have a six-lane section south of Plum Lane, you're gonna stick with that four-lane section to the north, and there's no perfect way, but I think center line's a much better way than either curb or right-of-way.
But so. I've heard arguments on both sides. It really depends on the area. The biggest trouble area, I think, is coming out of the TODD, which is North Virginia, where there's some places where we have huge amount of right-of-way. And if we actually made them do curb gutter sidewalk there, they would need the transit line to get them to the actual street from their properties in some places. It's ridiculous amount of right-of-way in some places. But then, on the opposite, you look in, on South Virginia Street, and you don't have enough. So it's, we can look at the different areas, we may be able to block it out. I think it'd be nice to have it the same everywhere, but I, since our property line and our right-of-way situations aren't the same everywhere, it's kind of hard to keep it consistent, and that's why it's changed throughout each one, as we tried to match But I can, I'll work with RTC and Engineering to see if we can come up with, with a good answer on that.
Is that fair enough? Okay, thanks. Melissa?
Melissa.
Melissa.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lindell, on the front setbacks that we're talking about, the wording kind of, kind of is problematic in here, that it says, unless otherwise specified, building shall be setback 18 feet. And when you say shall be setback, that means that there's no flexibility in the building design, and so you're.
What section are you talking about here?
3A. We're talking about this 18-foot setback, which I think is great. It should be maybe a minimum of eight, of 18 feet, but where it says shall be, then, then you're into the, another variance or problem with the building orientation, if you have an alternative to it. So I think it could be remedied if you put shall be setback a minimum.
Where are you at on 3A?
3A, front building setbacks.
The very front of the standards, like the first page.
The first page of this? Oh, okay.
I think it came up in a different section, too, but if it shall be setback 18 feet, that says there's no building orientation option. You can't put it in the back, you can't put it in the side.
Marilyn, would you like to?
Well, I can jump in. I think, so I think shall be a minimum of 18 is fine.
Shall be a minimum?
Minimum.
Yeah. A minimum is fine, you don't want to have, should be 18, because we can't allow it to go less. We can, we can allow them to go more, but we can't, if we set it at 18, it has to be 18 or more. They can't go down to 11.
Okay.
That's perfect.
Thanks.
Well, that was an easy fix. Thank you, Melissa. Okay.
And I think there's some follow-up wording on that also, in a different section that I'll find, where it says it has to be set on the property at the setback line. So I'll find that wording and change that as well. Okay, so back to South Virginia Transit Corridor? Is that good? Okay. So we've, I think I covered that, the setback issue. We kept the 18 feet on the southern portion, and then the northern portion of South Virginia Street, so, so, northern portion of South Virginia Street TODD would be 10 feet. And that came up in some discussions when we brought these South Virginia Design Standards forward to council, and that was a number that came up, came out from that discussion there. So we brought in the 10 feet there, and that's something we can work with, but that allows that more urban development that we have in the Midtown area, where you've got the building, the businesses closer up to the right-of-way and the sidewalk.
Do they all meet that right now? It seems to me.
I'm sorry?
Do they all meet that 10-foot minimum? It seems to me.
No, somewhere at zero, somewhere actually in the right-of-way. Somewhere at zero, they're all over the place. But they're, they're in the closer area, 18. If you were to do 18 from property line, that's gonna really set it a lot further back than where the existing buildings are, the more historic buildings, which are in the negative five to 10 range, somewhere in there, 10 to 15 range.
Okay.
The wording in the Transit Corridor, and I've heard, again, parking is another issue that I have heard both sides of the discussion. So really looking for direction from Planning Commission on this one. We've set different parking standards. Restaurants and retails go to the downtown standard in the northern portion of South Virginia, which is zero in those areas. The wording in the table, in table 18.08-27, that second row there, has parking for existing structures issued a building permit before January 1st, shall be determined by the property owner. And that is something that we have in, or had in the East Fourth Street area before it was the TODD, when we had the Reno Sparks Corridor plan in there. And it really worked well, just to leave it up to the property owner on what they determined in that area, because there's a lot of infill projects in there. A lot of times, they're trying to get a business in that doesn't quite meet the parking requirement, and variance isn't gonna help. They're not gonna put in a business that's gonna fail. Well, they might, but then they'll have to put in another business, and that's really a market-driven issue. But it was, it was, it seemed to be very successful in the East Fourth Street TODD, and we have similar wording in that, in the TOD, in the East Fourth Street TODD now. But that was something that the, the Business Association from the East Fourth Street TODD came up with, was to let the property owner decide the parking, which I think in an infill area like that is appropriate. I wouldn't do that for new development, but an infill area where you're trying to, you've got that key business that's gonna come in and help out that neighborhood or that block, and you can work with it, and you can maybe lease spaces elsewhere if needed, but we're not gonna require additional parking for any of the older buildings in that area.
Didn't we talk about that at another workshop on parking lots or something that we did several years?
We got into parking when we had the Midtown workshop.
No, it was even before Midtown was brought up. I think it was part of the California Avenue plan at the time, and the, the owners of the properties there, the people that wanted to run the businesses, said, we can't, we can't meet the parking standards. And I think it was determined that parking is what parking is. If they want to put a business in there, a boutique or whatever, whatever parking's available is what parking is available. And we didn't set any, any more requirements on that for, for parking. But I believe it was the California area.
And it, it could have been.
Because those were all old.
California District of Downtown.
Yeah.
They have, we don't require any parking for new businesses in that area.
Okay.
So that was probably, that's probably the area you were thinking of. Good example is, right now, there's a bar slash restaurant trying to go in on Cheney, I believe it is, and the building is built to zero lot line on all sides, but there's a vacant lot next door that the person's willing to lease, that lease the spaces to them, which they're allowed to do. You can provide your parking within 1,000 feet from your business. But the only thing that that does is that gets the city involved in main, or in monitoring their parking lease, which we really have no interest in doing. It's not something we need to spend our time on. So it's, if that business needs parking, there's, there's a number of spaces available for lease, and I'm using the Midtown area for example. Right now, I've actually had three property owners come to me in the last 48 hours, looking to open, to establish open lot parking lots in the Midtown area, which is, I'll help them out as much as I can to provide that parking in the area. So that would be a perfect example of, it's up to the property owner. If that business is gonna need it, if it's gonna fail without the parking, then, then they'll lease the parking spaces if they need them. It's definitely a different approach on parking.
What happens? Can I?
Commissioner Stapleton.
What happens if you give them the, this is for, for them to get their business licenses? Or is this for them to get a permit, or?
The one that's in is, they have a permit which is triggering a certain amount of parking.
So what if they lease the parking, and then, you know, that, the person who's leased them the parking in four years, you know, decides to build and takes away the parking? You can't then just shut them down and revert that, revoke their permit, can you? That's the idea?
You're correct.
Oh, okay.
It makes it challenging. So we would ask them at that point to provide us another lease, showing where they've gone, and this is only three parking spaces in this one situation.
It seems like it might be difficult to enforce down the road, you know? Sounds like a good idea now, but.
It's challenging, and it would go, ultimately, it would end up, we would end up working with code enforcement to get involved to, to request that they provide us with another lease document.
Ken, you have a question or a comment?
I just had a comment on the parking. First of all, I kind of agree with Claudia on an infill building, and these TODDs, you want to work with them so they can get a business in place when you have an existing structure. But Claudia also knows full well that can immerse her time-wise, nasty parking issues like the, what was that little restaurant on California Avenue just west of Arlington? Just as a reminder, I think they didn't have enough parking, and they ended up parking in other businesses' spaces, and that was just a major cluster.
And that's actually a perfect example. They had the leases that the city had to monitor.
Yeah.
And it was, they had other parking available, but because of the leases, they couldn't maintain those leases, so they were in violation in the end.
But my other comment is, for new buildings, these tables are extremely confusing to me. And I think if I read them six times, I interpret them in six different ways. And I put some thought into this, I have been for a long time, and it seems to me what would be really simple and really easy is, right now, the parking table under, what is it, 18121102, has parking standards for the regular zoning codes like NC, AC, PO. You've got one for the downtown regional centers. Why not just expand that to have one for the regular zoning codes, one for the regional centers, and one for the TODDs, and call it good, unless there's other specific standards like, for example, the East Fourth Street TODD. Fair and Peers, I know, has done a number of parking studies downtown. I think we've got a good handle on what good ratios are downtown, and I think there's enough information in the Urban Land Institute and Institute of Transportation Engineers where we could develop a pretty good table for the TODDs. And that way, all you gotta do is go to 18121102 to see your parking standards, and not have these tables in every different TODD trying to interpret what the standards are. Just a thought.
I think that's great, and just for clarification, it's actually based on land use type, not by zoning, but.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying. And the discussion with the older buildings came from city council direction. Originally, they wanted to encourage the older buildings to be maintained in the Midtown area in particular, and East Fourth Street. So I think we can look at some combination of, definitely simplifying these, but referring more to the, to the parking table.
Thanks, Ken.
But they did want, council does want to maintain a focus on encouraging people to maintain the older building stock.
Mr. Chairman, so Claudia, you, you don't see that as a problem? You see that as being okay to work out?
Yeah.
Okay.
To some degree, not completely, but.
Right, but I mean.
Some simplification, yes.
Because I think of it, on the other hand, of, from development or construction side, we, we go to work with one of our clients who may be on a phone, online with us, looking at something online, and if we can direct him to one, one point to look at in the code, it sure would be a lot easier.
And we've added in that 50% reduction since we've done all the other parking tables. So, and I think now that we have that, it works in concert with referring to the, to the other parking table.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm. On G, the density area, I've changed that to the minimum residential, residential density on parcels adjacent to Virginia Street shall be 14 dwellings per acre. So bringing, still having the density requirement that the regional plan requires, but having that only on the parcels adjacent to Virginia Street, which will allow for that transition into the adjacent zoning districts, Midtown in particular. I know we'll be looking at the residential district from Midtown and potentially looking at lower densities in that area, and keeping that, the base requirement right along the Transit Corridor where we really need the intensity and density.
Claudia, do you have a definition for adjacent?
It's defined.
It's a different, adjoining is on South Virginia, right?
Correct. In this case, adjoining and adjacent would be the same thing.
Okay.
But adjoining means, adjoining means touching. Adjacent means next to, but there could be a street in between it.
Okay, so what I'm thinking back to is, last month, we heard about a project on Mount Rose Street near Plumas.
Yes.
At the intersection. That's far enough away that it's not adjacent to?
Correct.
Okay.
I could word it to where there's frontage, street frontage on Virginia Street, something like that.
I was, in my mind, I was just trying to get a visualization of what the distance back off of.
You'd have to have frontage on Virginia Street, the way I proposed, and this is just, this is just a thought, you know?
Right, well, that's.
You can have comments on that.
That's why when I read this, it brought confusion to me, and I wanted to ask you that question to maybe look at a clarification in there.
Okay, yeah, sure, I can do that, but just for the, for your information. Adjoining means actually touching. Adjacent is next to it, but there could be something in between, like a, another right-of-way, a river, an open space, something like that.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair, the, right above that, the decreases in landscaping, we talked about that last time, right? So that's just taking it down for.
Yes, I'm sorry, I missed discussing that, yes. That was, and that, we brought that down. When you reach those higher FARs in density, the 10% was becoming a problem, and we could see that in permit review. It was very difficult to meet those requirements. So we brought that down to 5% on the higher density and intensity, and then 10% on the other development.
And I think that's what we heard requested by the people that are up there. Okay, thank you.
I did not make any proposed changes to Plum Lane Crossing, as we worked very closely with the original property owner for that area, who isn't, who's no longer the original, who's no longer the property owner. But there have been other developers involved in that area who seemed fine with that area, and we didn't have any discussion. It's a very small district within the South Virginia TODD, and I haven't heard any issues with that, with those standards in that area, from the property owners. Let me see, going onto Mill Street, which is J. And I think this reflects what Mr. Crater was bringing up, that I just took out the parking requirement, which would then refer back to the table. So that's exactly, I think, what you were looking for there. We had a, on number three, I could see three, wouldn't that be B3? Ground floor was required to be raised a minimum of three feet. That's proved to be problematic. Most projects do it anyway. If you're gonna be right on one of the main quarters, they're gonna raise it up anyway. But really, a design, a design aspect that would be up to the developer of the property, and we don't tend to get into that specific of design requirements in Reno. Looking at four, it's a new section four in the Mill Street TODD quarter, following the River Landing at Mill. And this is where it allows for IC zoning. And again, they would be able to develop either under IC or MU, but you couldn't combine the two. In the, we're on the East Fourth Street now, in K. Frontage on all, in that district minimum setback table, I took out from adjacent street curbs so that defaults to setbacks being measured from property line. In this one also, we had, under the residential parking requirement, we have one space per unit and we had not to exceed two spaces per unit. Hardly anybody ever did exceed two spaces per unit, but on occasion, they need to. But we haven't really seen an, an abuse of providing too much parking in this area. It's typically the other direction. Oh, also in this area, we've got, this is existing wording, if you're changing the use in an area, so if you're going from office, which has very small parking requirement and you're turning it into a restaurant, we're not going to require additional parking. So it's, it's, you're not going to be required to lease a parking space. But if you've got a building that you believe you can market as a use that has a higher parking demand, then this would allow you to do that. And that's existing parking in that, the existing parking requirement in that area. Any new parking, we just refer to code. Under Architecture and Site Layout, I reduced that to fifty percent of the frontage would have to be building or pedestrian amenities, down from seventy-five.
Melissa?
On Ken's markup, going back to South Virginia as well, the same item, Architecture and Site Layout. I think he had a good option here that if you, if you had the option of, of doing twenty-five percent or in East Fourth Street, fifty percent. Or he added a minimum ten-foot wide strip located behind and adjacent to the back of the sidewalk. And I think that that, what was your point in that? Giving more options? Because I think it's good.
Yeah, more options.
Again, it's, it's still a building orientation issue.
Can we take a look at that, Claudia?
And where, where is that comment of yours? I have your version also, Ken.
It's on Ken's version on South Virginia Street on C, Architecture and Layout. And I think it applies to the one we're just talking about right now for East Fourth Street, too.
Okay, got it.
Enter the very first section, Claudia. It's like the third page item N, off-street parking shall not encumber more than fifty percent.
Item N on, in MU?
So, and yeah, eighteen oh eight, three oh one.
Okay.
Item N, off-street parking. That's where the language is.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just so I can visualize? Thanks. Just so I can visualize something like this. In this instance, whether it's from seventy-five here to fifty or down to twenty-five, so the rest of the street frontage would be parking or an entrance to parking, something like that. So what's an example of this?
So where you would have, and I think this is what you're seeing, is that you would have either your building up front or pedestrian amenities, you couldn't, you could never have parking right up in front. You would need landscaping up there anyway. He's saying six feet, it would have to be at least ten feet because of the existing setback. But you would have probably an increased amount of landscaping between the curb, between the sidewalk and the parking lot. So you don't have a parking lot right at the sidewalk.
Oh, okay, I'm thinking
You have a landscape buffer.
Okay. I'm thinking, so we're talking sort of the depth, we're not talking the length of the, of the street frontage?
No, we're, we're talking length.
Okay.
Yeah. But you would have part of that length, part of that length would be taken up as building.
Right.
And it's saying at, at least half of it has to be building. Or you can, your parking has to have a landscaping buffer. If you do have your parking up in that area
That was Ken's suggestion to have the buffer. Say without that, though, if you just took it down to fifty percent, it would be half building and half parking or driveway?
You still have landscaping. In, in both cases, you have to have landscaping. So I think you're saying have additional landscaping.
Right, no, I under, I think I understood Ken's suggestion. I was just asking, I mean, the, in, in, in this instance where it's less than fifty percent or twenty-five percent building, it's always going to be driveway or parking. But I mean, yeah, I mean, that's, that makes it a little bit more pedestrian-friendly if you've got a landscape buffer. I understand his.
Okay.
I was just making sure I understand what that meant.
And just, so I can clarify with him, you say to have a minimum six-foot wide landscape strip. It would be ten feet because you have setback requirement, so that would actually be less than would be required if you had parking up there. So I think you're, you're saying have additional parking, I mean, additional landscaping, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and what I was throwing out there is to do a good job with the landscaping where, because I've dealt with this before. You can have a landscape architect do a design where within three years, you could have basically a four-foot screen wall of landscaping there and maybe put in a split rail fence or some sort of wall that fits with the landscaping, but that way you truly have a nice screen and a pedestrian amenity between the sidewalk and the parking.
I have a comment on this one, because this is for East Fourth Street.
Yes.
Even with the, the nice landscaping, that's a good suggestion. I think that's a good suggestion everywhere but like East Fourth and Midtown. I, I still think if you're going to maintain sort of the urban pedestrian feel, that you really shouldn't take it down to less than seventy-five percent on a street frontage. I mean, you know, for most of the city, yeah, but, okay, let's think about East Fourth Street, right? You know, we've all walked down it. You've got all these old, you know, historic buildings next to each other. There's no breaks in building frontage at all. You know, I'm trying to think of an infill lot over here, which this would apply to, right? Because this is new construction.
Right.
If I can think of one, then suddenly you've got one building with, you know, down to, that's half, you know, parking lot or fence. You know, I get that for any other part of the city, but I just don't think that's what we're going for. I mean, and I hate to say, I did this last time, but I really think we need to be thinking about, what's the bigger picture here? What, what is the vision that we're trying to achieve? We're trying to achieve an urban feel, walkability. You know, if you've got a block of these cool old brick buildings that people really like, you know, strolling down, going into bars and restaurants, whatever, you know, and then you break it up with a parking lot, I don't think that, that gets us there for that vision now. Maybe I'm wrong and that vision isn't what we want, but in my mind, that's what we're going for. And it really is only in a few places in town where I think this stuff works. But if we're talking about East Fourth, especially the part of East Fourth that's right where the historic buildings are, just east of Virginia, I don't, I, I, I think that that would be a, a break in the streetscape that would not be agreeable to that design and that urban feel there. So
Is your
In my opinion, I would rather leave it at seventy-five percent for this.
Is your concern just on Fourth Street or in that whole corridor? Because it goes up to three, it goes up to eighty.
This is East Fourth to eighty.
It's, it's the tracks to eighty.
Right, so closer down to eighty where the motels are, right, that's different. I mean, I guess I'm thinking of like, you know, the first eight blocks.
So maybe just on Fourth Street? So maybe right on Fourth Street, you would have the seventy-five percent?
Right, right.
And then off of it, fifty percent?
Right, I mean, you know, maybe, I don't know, maybe there's parts of Sixth also. But yeah, I'm thinking the part of East Fourth, right? And that's, to me, that's the important part. That's the core of the neighborhood. That's the business district, you know? Once you get beyond where you go under the underpass, right, it's different. And it's already broken up and that's fine. You've got motels and stuff. You know, maybe there's parts of E-six that are a little more dense like that. But, I don't know, I'd, I'd have to go walk and look at it. But I think for the area that really creates the character of this neighborhood, which is, yeah, just mainly along Fourth Street, but I wouldn't totally want to limit that without looking at it.
Right.
That I don't, I don't think that's appropriate.
We can go out and look at those areas and identify which areas would be
Yeah, let's take a tour and talk about this. That's my two cents.
But we can look at those areas that would be appropriate to maintain that, that more urban appearance.
Melissa, you had a comment?
Melissa Lindell. In, in some of those areas, I think we also need to look at what we're, what you're looking for. Because, for instance, in that Fourth Street area, not on Fourth Street, but Sixth Street, I've got somebody that's looking to do a little grocery store, a neighborhood grocery store. But they need to have a loading dock for their, for their goods. So do we want to encourage bringing new, new businesses like grocery stores to serve the neighborhood in? And then how do we do that? By putting the building up on the street? Because then you've got the, where do you put the loading? And where do you add the front door? So it's back to the same thing that people, people want to see the front of the store and they want the loading to be in back. So I think that maybe you ought to, one size might not fit all in, depending on what, what comes to the neighborhood, what kind of stores.
I think there has to be options on this, that one size does not fit all in this case. If you go down Fourth Street, Sixth Street, or any of them, they're not all cookie cutter now. And they weren't twenty and thirty years ago. And I doubt that they'll be thirty years from now, too. But do you want infill or do you not want infill? If we're not, if we're going to make it so restrictive that we've heard from the development community that it's restrictive right now where you can't do it, we're not going to get that area improved anyway. So I personally would rather see some options, but it's just me. Ken?
Again, Ken Crater. And Dagny, I fully agree with you with all the historic buildings and stuff and all the different areas of town. I sat on the Historical Resources Commission for a number of years. But I think if you look at most of those historic properties, they're on pretty small lots. But it's the larger parcels that are the issue. And again, like Melissa said, if you had a chance for a really cool infill development that had ground floor retail and some really cool apartments and stuff up above, on that larger parcel, like an old motel or something, would it be that bad to only have fifty percent of the street frontage of buildings if they're smaller buildings designed properly? Again, you know, one size doesn't fit all and I fully understand where you're coming from. But I just think you don't want to cut yourself short and also eliminate the chance to get a really neat project going because we have too many restrictions in place, so.
I think, I mean, I mean, I think that, I don't know, I kind of think some of these blocks, we've got to stick to our guns. And, you know, there's not, you know, most of the opportunities for infill are on blocks that aren't where they really have that sort of urban streetscape or the potential for that. And you want to think on some of those blocks, I disagree with you. I don't think that's what we would want. But on a lot of them in these areas, yeah, that's probably okay. I agree with you. But maybe we need to look at it more specifically, but, and in terms of Melissa's example of the, the grocery and the loading dock, I mean, you know, it's probably a model that isn't meant for, you know, an urban area. I mean, how do, how do people do it in cities across the country? You know, they don't need a, the side entrance and a loading dock. You know, look at the Co-op that just went in. That's a perfect example. They don't, you know, it's a little different. Well, I guess they have a little parking lot on the side. But, you know, it's a different model that, you know, might not fit in these more dense blocks. And I just, I think, and again, I could be wrong. Maybe we should talk about this. You know, that's the vision that I have and it's probably limited to not that many blocks. But, you know, maybe I'm wrong, that that isn't what we should be going for. But if it is, I do think we have to have some regulations and standards in place that are going to promote that. And I don't think we should compromise that. And yeah, there should be, you know, some flexibility really if there's a hardship. You know, we already have that process in place, you know, so.
We can also look at alley access. That has a lot to do with the, with the project. If a project, and there's a lot of alleys in that area servicing those, serving those parcels, which would, you know, help something like a grocery store coming into that area. But we can look at the area and see where those blocks are. I agree that
Yeah, maybe we should get out some maps or some pictures and really look at this stuff and think about, you know, what are we really looking at here? What do we really want? What does it look like? What do these regulations get us? You know, I, and I don't know if that's, you know, how long we have for this, or if that's too, you know, involved or too much work. But, you know, I think to have sort of visuals and really think about what we're accomplishing with different standards, like where the standards are falling short, where they're not, you know, allowing development that we might want. I think we might, we should really look at that in terms of, you know, talking about specific blocks, looking at, you know, different streetscapes and seeing where we're at.
Okay, we can, we can look into that. At the table below, the section we were just talking about, the F landscaping table, similar changes that we had in the, in the previous section. As we look at all of these, if we agree that these are changes we want through the whole thing, it may be something we can just put under the landscape table for, for the MU section. We've got a, a section for that already for, for MU, MU zoning. So if it, if it ends up being consistent through all of them, we can put it in a more logical place. That would make it easier for you guys to find. Not, not that you can't find it, but that came out wrong, sorry. North Virginia TOD, Staffordman's bringing the North Terminus of the North Virginia Street TOD down to Hoag Road. We would like to maintain identification that transit should still reach out to the stead area. It's still needed out in that area, so we'll work with RTC to come up with some appropriate wording on how we want that addressed. There is still a regional center out there, so we do need to show some connectivity up to that area and that, and recognize that stead, the stead area does need transit. And we can work with RTC. We've already started those conversations on how we can identify that in the TOD corridor. We don't want to just totally cut it off since we know there is still quite a bit up there.
You don't have to have a TOD corridor to have a bus going down the road, do you?
No, you don't, but with, but regional centers
So what's the connectivity problem? Because they'll continue on North Virginia, old North Virginia like they do now.
Correct, they will. They will. But a regional center should be identified as having transit service or future transit service when development comes in. And so that's what we're more concerned about.
Which I, I thought that's what we discussed at the last workshop, was even though we're pulling the boundaries in, don't eliminate or don't preclude from future development with growth.
Right.
So are we saying the same thing now?
Yes, I think so. I think more of, more of a focus on transit.
Thank you.
That was allowing the development, the development and the transit to work together and identifying that there's a regional center out there that we can't forget about.
Why was Ho, why was Hoag Road chosen instead of McCarran?
Because of the, because of the Bonanza, specifically casinos need to be located in regional centers. Existing ones, new ones can come into regional centers, certain regional centers. Existing casinos need to be located in a TOD corridor. By master plan policy.
I'll buy that.
The, the theory behind that being casinos typically have an employment base that depends on transit for access. North Virginia TOD, brought down the front yard setback to ten feet on North Virginia. So the only area, North Virginia is going to go from McCarran, because that's where the University Regional Center and, Convention, Regional Center ends, to, up to Hoag Road. So it's not much area. There's a lot of topographical, topographical constraints in that area. So not sure how much development you'll see up in that area. But this allows for a ten-foot rather than eighteen walkability up there. I'm not so sure about, but we do have the transit. We would encourage transit in that area. And there is, there is actually quite a bit of residential up in that area on the west side of Virginia. Same landscape changes regarding FAR and density in Table eighteen oh eight, forty-two. And then we have the seventy-five down to fifty. I wouldn't say that's a, an urban area that we would need to maintain the seventy-five.
Is this north from like downtown North Virginia or this is north?
McCarran, right.
Yep. Ten-four.
The other one is in the University Regional Center.
Okay, yeah, this one's fine, I think, down to fifty.
Okay. The density minimum and FAR minimum I took out. But we do allow for the density in FAR to come in there. So it is allowed to come in. We provide for it, arguably. And reduce the landscaping requirement when you reach that FAR and density to further allow and provide for it. Which we can discuss with regional.
Claudia? Now, why wouldn't this landscaping be the same as the others?
That's what I was saying, is that these will probably all end up being the same and then we'll locate it into the landscaping table. I, I was taking notes last time and they got changed in different ways as we went through it. So we'll bring it all together if that's a concept that we want to move forward in with. The Staffordman's bringing the Western Terminus, the West Fourth Street Transit Corridor to McCarran. And then the West And then the western plan area, we would recommend a portion of that being removed from the sphere of influence. We do have direction from council to move forward with that. And I've been discussing that with regional planning also to hopefully be addressed in the regional plan update to remove the portion, I guess technically it's south of Gold Ranch, out of the sphere of influence. And then to include the Gold Ranch area, specifically the Gold Ranch area, in with the western regional center. So, we would have a regional center that's Boomtown and Gold Ranch. So, that'd be one regional center and kind of look at that area as a, kind of the Cabela's, Boomtown, Gold Ranch area being in that regional center. And then the, the more rural areas overlooking the river and then south of Gold Ranch coming out of the sphere of influence, so it would no longer be in our jurisdiction. So, we're on to West Fourth Street. If nobody has anything else up there, oh, I already am on West Fourth Street. So, we have, I've taken out the 18 feet and reduced it down to 10 with five for landscaping entries and five for sidewalks. So, this area is just going to be from Keystone to McCarran. It's the only part of West Fourth Street that would still be in it. So, it's that area by the ICE Company. The, and there's, there's, there's a huge amount of opportunity in there for redevelopment. We've got where the cabins came down. We've got the, the trailer parks in there. We've got a number of vacant lots in that area. And I get numerous calls about that area for development, but we haven't seen anything yet. But I would say it's, it's prime for, for development in that area. I took out the parking table. So, again, that's going to refer back to the overall parking table, which is what Ken brought up. Took out the street frontage requirement altogether in this area. These are, and I would say this part of Fourth Street, West Fourth Street, totally different than East Fourth Street. We've got huge parcels that could come in with one of those big projects that, that Ken and Melissa were talking about that may need to look at some creative design opportunities that may or may, that 50% may or may not work with them. It doesn't have that historic building stock. So, I think it's, it would be appropriate to take out that requirement. I removed the minimum requirement for FAR and density in this area, although it, it has no cap. So, it still has unlimited density and FAR, so they can go as high or as dense as they want.
Claudia?
High of an FAR, high of density, sorry.
I have a question.
And probably in building height, actually. I don't think we have a building height max in this area.
Is that something, that seems, so you could build a high-rise there? Not that you would.
I believe you could. I don't think we have, we don't have a restriction on that area.
Because in any of the Todd corridors, there's no height restriction, there's no height limit.
Some of them are. There, there are, in some areas there are.
South Virginia.
I'll go back and look at those. I know it's something we're going to address with the Midtown District. But on this area, because this area is Fourth Street between Keystone and McCarran, between the tracks and the freeway. So, there's a couple trailer parks, there's a shopping center, cemetery.
Is that something we want to think about for this one? If we want a height limit here or not? I don't know. I just throwing that out there. I don't even know if that's the appropriate time to bring that up. I just, that seems like.
We've got it open, I can go back and.
It seems like, seems a little incongruent over there, but I don't know. I don't know what anybody, anybody else thinks about that.
I can break back an analysis of the building height in all of the areas. Might be something you want to look at.
At least, I, I would like to look at it for, for this section because I know that once you get about halfway down, excuse me, halfway going west between Keystone and McCarran.
Like Stoker.
Where the old airport used to be, there was a hangar up there turned into a rock pit, storage area. I only know it because of looking at historical photos, okay? It's, there's apartments that are built there on the hillside as you start going up and homes on the south side of the hill there.
Okay.
And there, there's some restaurants down below. And I'm, and I'm not talking about before you, you know, then you go farther and then you get into where Johnny's Restaurant and the W is and all that. You know, we've got existing homes in there that I, and, and residences that I would think we would hear loudly from if somebody came in to put a 10-story professional office building in or something and started taking out views or whatever.
So, maybe Stoker would be a good cutoff?
Stoker to Keystone would be, you know, a good place, I think. But I think that's something we should look at.
The other way, isn't it? Stoker to McCarran.
Well, I mean, I think we should look at the whole, whole thing and find a dividing line and, and be respectful to the, to the people that are already living there.
Okay.
Of course, some of those are built so high up on that hill that you could put a five-story building there and it still would be below the base of their.
That's why I think we should look at it and designate a maximum height, you know? I know, I don't remember what the name of the street is, but you go up to the Skyview Apartments. Ken, you should be able to, I thought you owned a piece of property in there or did at one time. I don't remember what the name of the street is.
Summit Ridge.
Summit Ridge Drive, thank you. Maybe, maybe that's the point of intersection that we look at, at, as a dividing line. But I think that's why we should look at it, just for that reason.
Okay, and that, that's the wording that we have before you. So, if you, I'm open for more questions, discussion, direction. And then I would say that the next time I will bring back maps identifying new boundaries and have the wording cleaned up.
Thank you, Claudia. I do have two requests to speak, so let's do the formalities here. Ken Crater, would you please identify yourself for Robert? You have however long you want to take because this is whatever you want it to be.
Thank you. Ken Crater, for the record. I just have a couple other things that I want to get out there that I had in the changes that I emailed to everybody earlier today. And first of all, I know we're only looking at Todd standards, but I just wanted to throw this out there because I know a lot of you serve on the Regional Planning Commission and just food for thought is within the regional centers, since we're kind of having these discussions on the Tods, maybe 21 in lieu of 30 dwelling units per acre and a 1.0 instead of a 1.5 floor area ratio. Again, if we can get projects going in today's economy, you know, that'd be fantastic. And if somebody does a beautiful little 21 unit townhome project or something, I think we'd all be happy. So, not for changes here, but just future, future thought and discussion. But on the Todd, the requirements right now for the sidewalks and the landscaped parkway and the little seating area on streets like South Virginia Street, we have a requirement in there for a five-foot six sidewalk. And since we're talking about Tods and being pedestrian friendly, why don't we call it a nice even six-foot sidewalk? I lived in a neighborhood for 13 years with six-foot sidewalks and they're beautiful because couples can actually pass each other so you can fit four people on the sidewalk at once. Or if you're mom holding your kid in one hand, six foot's just a nice comfortable width. And why are we cutting it down to five-six? It's just, let's, let's make it truly Todd friendly. And then on the landscaped area, you have the option of either landscaping or paving. But I think we ought to encourage it to be landscaped unless there's a reason for it to be paved, such as you have a pedestrian access to the street or you have some pedestrian furniture or some reason to actually have it paved. But we don't want to be known as a paved city. We want to be known as a city of trembling leaves. So, I think that's something we ought to think about. Also, on 18.08301, item can parking structures, I had some suggesting wording in there. It talks about them basically a parking garage looking like a regular building all the way around. But that's not really realistic because of vending requirements and step by code. So, my thought was to say parking structure shall be architecturally compatible with the building it serves and have a commercial retail appearance on the ground floor adjacent to public right of way. Again, so we get that pedestrian feel along the street, but obviously we want to encourage parking structures too. And if we make them too expensive, we won't get any. And then down below on item N, I talked about that as far as some landscape requirements. If you do have parking footing on the street. And then on item, well, on parking pedestrian amenities, we have the requirement that you contribute 1% based on the cost of the project excluding land and financing. My thought is to make it real simple, so we're all playing with the same numbers, is to base it on the building valuation when you submit for building permit. That's a readily available number. Either you submit it on your building permit application form or the building department can calculate the valuation for you. But that way, we've got a number that's the same for everyone. And frankly, I don't want to have to get into trying releasing what all my soft costs are on a project. To me, that's sort of proprietary information. So, I'd like to, if you could, consider just using the valuation of the building to calculate that 1%. Then on signage, I think we ought to encourage or at least allow greater sign area in these Tods. On item eight, signs, item B, it only allows for six-foot square signs located between eight and 12 feet in height. And I'd like to allow up to 20 square feet because as long as they're architecturally integrated with the building, a 20-square-foot sign can still look great. And also, in terms of flexibility, why not allow up to 14 feet in height? And the example there is my State Street Plaza building that I did has a 16-foot first floor plate. So, it's a tall building because it's got these great tall 13, 14-foot interior ceiling heights. So, my thought was to allow between eight and 14 feet. And then on below, adding a new, a new clause, and we have this in a lot of our sign standards for our commercial and retail projects, signs shall use individually channelized letters. The location of the building mounted letter shall be integrated into the architectural design of the building. Colors shall be compatible with the building palette. Nationally recognized and trademark corporate logos, you could just say logos and colors may be used. All exterior building mounted letters shall be designed to fit flush to the wall and no canned signs are allowed. And maybe there's some variation of this. But I think that's what we're looking for is to have, you know, nice signage with the individual channelized letters and not the ugly canned signs from the 60s and 70s. So, I think we can up the bar on that. And then on lighting, I'd like to see all lighting in the entire city of Reno, exterior lighting be dark sky certified and fully shielded. I think that just ought to be standards that we work in everywhere within the code. Again, to try and eliminate the, the light pollution in the night sky, which is one of the reasons that we love Reno. And then I put some comments in here, again, since we have this section a code open. We have the same issue in the professional office and neighborhood commercial as far as building frontage. And I know we're looking at the Tods, but just to put this thought in your head, if we're going to change the Tods, I'd like to have eventually that same flexibility in the PO and the NC where it goes down to 50% of buildings on the adjoining fronting street, just to provide that flexibility.
Ken, if I can interrupt you real quickly, you know, we'd be more than happy to, to look at that if we opened this up. But we didn't open this up. It's just like your comments regarding regional centers. This is from city council. If you want those things to be looked at by us, then go to city council and ask them to have us look at it. Really, because you're getting, you're, you know, you can get us frustrated because we want to do these things and it makes sense, but our hands are kind of tied at the same time.
I understand, absolutely, yeah. And then just the last comment is that, just in terms of clarifying, is under each of the different Tods, like the South Virginia Street Transit Corridor applicability, just put in the limits of where that's from too. I think that'll make it much easier. If they have their own section number in the limits, it'll just be much easier when somebody's reading through here to know what portion of the city that they're working in. And that's all my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Mike Raely.
For the record. For the record, Mike Raely with Rubicon Design Group. I don't have much to say. I just would like to reiterate a couple points that I think Claudia made and Commissioner Stapleton in regards to especially the Midtown area and looking at the standards. I agree that getting retailers to go in without parking in the front is difficult. But I think in that particular area, it would be a shame to allow that. I think it goes against really, I, I think it would be out of place. I mean, if you look at some of the most successful businesses down there like Soup and Midtown Eats, The Hub, places like that, they don't have parking and they're very successful. People know that they're, they park in the back. But I think it's fairly unique to that stretch. I understand further down Virginia Street, I agree with Ken, there's been times where, you know, I had a full head of hair before I looked at a site plan, trying to figure out how to make it work. So, the same goes with, with Fourth Street. I think there's your chance, if you've got an area that's highly urbanized, there's your chance, if you're going to pull it off, that's where it's going to happen. So, that's, and I think Claudia has addressed that and, and for the most part. So, that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Mike. Does anyone else have any comments? Any comments from the commissioners to Claudia? Commissioner White?
Go ahead, Commissioner Kaufman, go ahead.
Ken brought up the six-foot sidewalks from the five-foot six-inch, which I'm glad he brought it up because I, I look at that too and I go, why not six-foot? So, why is that different?
We've always done five-six because of the curb. The curb is six inches. So, the curb is six inches, the sidewalk is five and a half, total it's six foot.
Okay, so it is total.
And that's how we have it throughout the city.
Unless you have a landscaped parkway, then you have five-six.
Commissioner Wieski.
Wait, can I?
I agree, I was just going to say, Commissioner Kaufman, I agree with you. Six feet is six feet and, and if you've got six inches of curb, that's just added bonus, but.
So.
Ken's correct though. So, if you've got the parkway, you wouldn't need the five-six. You wouldn't need, you, the six-foot would be appropriate.
Could they make it six foot though if the, I mean, can they make it wider or does it have to be?
Oh, yeah, it's all minimum.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Everything's a minimum, well, in that regard.
Last call for questions or comments. Commissioner Wieski.
Thank you. I would just like to say thank you to everybody that's here tonight. I wish we would have had a better turnout. First workshop, we had a great turnout and we got lots of great input. Claudia, to you, I want to say thanks because I know you got, you had a lot of input to, from all of us last time. And what we got back tonight from you was easy to review and easy to go through and, and start to pick it apart again, which is what we're supposed to be doing, and continuing to refine. And with the help of, of our audience this evening, we're able to do that. And we're getting closer to something that not only from city side, from the planning commission side or staff side will be easier to work with, but from the other side that I work with too, the development side, construction side, it's going to be a lot, a lot easier, a lot better for us all. So, congratulations on being able to assemble all of our thoughts and, and ideas and comments into something that really makes sense.
Thank you.
A question that I have that I would like a little input on either tonight or, or at our next workshop is, I've been noticing lately that in Midtown particularly and some on East Fourth Street itself, I'm seeing more and more delivery trucks pulling up and parking now that, especially now that we're getting rid of parking meters, pulling up on the sidewalk, there's a few beer delivery trucks who are now parking on the sidewalks. I don't know if it's because of the width of their vehicles, that they can no longer park up against the curb and have vehicles get by them, buses get by them. Definitely pedestrians and bicycles in the roadway can't get by them. But our sidewalks aren't designed for truck parking.
Some of them are barely designed for pedestrians.
I understand that, you know? So, alls we're going to do is destroy our walkways, having these vehicles parking on them. And, and I know it's an, an issue for RPD to deal with when they're. when they're, someday have some extra officers available to start looking for those things or stop. But in the meantime, what do we do design-wise for a roadway that allows for deliveries if they don't have alleyways? Fourth Street's kind of unique, because we do have alleyways there that, that should be used.
I think one thing that contributes to that is, um, a lot of leftover curb cuts. There's a lot of driveways going into a building, but there's no garage door.
Right.
And I think that's where I've seen it, is where there's, there's so many curb cuts still there that shouldn't be there anymore. And I know Public Works is looking at that, at that issue. And I think as we develop sidewalks, as they're wider and we have street trees and street furniture, that won't be an option for them anymore as the development comes in.
Okay. I mean, I also see them parking in the center of the, of the road when we have Painted Island, if you will. And then they get out and they make their deliveries and some of the parcel delivery companies. Uh, it's not just food or beverage distributors. I'm, I don't, I'm not picking on them. It seems like everybody that has deliveries is using one or the other. And when we're narrowing streets, when we're narrowing roadways to single lane traffic in, in each direction, creating lanes for bikes, curbside parking, um, all of a sudden, we've forgotten something. Or we're not really planning for the safety of the people that we're trying to put on these streets, pedestrians and bicycles. And I, I don't know, to me, this is the appropriate time to take action on it in these areas and to look at it. And if I'm wrong, then you can call me to the office and we'll talk about it. And, but I really, I think this is a good time to deal with that.
Okay.
Just, uh-
Thank you.
Just for a little bit of information, we had a similar situation on Kitsky and Mill Street that the concerns were brought up. The sergeant said to call Reno Direct and asked for the traffic enforcement. They have people that will come out there and cite them. And the, this was primarily auto deliveries that were parking in the middle of the streets, Kitsky and Mill Street. And, uh, they've done actually a very good job. When you call them of coming out and citing the truck drivers and keeping that under control. And I would think they would do the same thing for these delivery trucks. Now, legal may have a different opinion, but, uh, that Reno Direct number has worked very well on these other situations.
Well, I just, I, I guess, one of the things that I see us possibly doing is taking away, um, curbside frontage parking. And when we do that, then we take away delivery parking also. And, and it's, I think the extra wide sidewalks in Midtown are awesome. The bicycle lanes are awesome. But if we don't have a wide enough street for these people to, to park and get their deliveries on, especially if there's cars parked there and they're double parking or parking in the middle of the road, we're adding to traffic congestion. We're adding to an unsafe condition. And that goes right along with how we design the buildings that fit on these streets, on whether or not it's safe for the general public.
Okay, I can get with Public Works and see if they have some creative solutions to that.
Okay. I mean, it, now's the time to put it into ordinance if, if we can do it.
And hopefully every building will be successful and they'll need a lot of deliveries. Anyone else? Before I close this part of it?
Thank you, Claudia.
You're welcome.
Great job.
Thanks.
Thank you guys for sticking with us on this. It's a tough road, but this is an important issue. And I'm, I, I think we're getting close. I agree with Kevin. Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This public comment item is to allow the public to provide general public comment and not for comment on individual action items contained on this agenda. Is there anyone out there, regional planning, would you like to?
Sienna, you want to say hi?
For the, for the record?
Sure. For the record, Sienna Reed with Regional Planning. Um, I guess just as an aside, um, Regional Planning will be working with the local government jurisdictions as part of the regional plan update to more generally be looking at our system of transit-oriented development, which going back to Ken's comments, will include regional centers. So, um, currently as staff, we're looking at a couple of different ways to solicit public comment, get the planning commissioners, potentially the development community involved. Um, we haven't decided on anything yet and we need to get more input from the local governments, but we are working on that. For those of you on the Regional Planning Commission, you may see some things coming forward in the future. I know it's not, you know, the ordinances that are looking, we're looking at this evening, but we are working on that and just so everyone knows.
Thank you, Sienna. Being no further public comment, entertain a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.